Have everybody's attention please. First of all, I'd like to welcome you all. Thank you so much for coming. It looks like we kind of dodged the snowstorms tonight. We apologize for having a Tuesday evening event. We've been doing Wednesday evenings for 10 years now. And the school had another activity going tomorrow night. So we did have to change everything. All the speakers were already lined up and they all graciously were able to change that to tonight. So we're so thankful for that. First, I'd like to thank Mountains Taxi. And at the bottom of your agenda, it does show Mountain Taxi. It's Mountains Taxi when you go to the website. If you don't put that S in there, you're gonna go to someplace in California, I think. So please, please make sure that you go to mountainstaxi.com. And we thank them so much for supporting tonight's meeting. As we always do, I do see some new faces. But we have presentations from 7:00 until 8:00 without questions, without comments, just full. I mean, I think we've got, you know, 13, 14 speakers tonight. So we'll run through everybody. You'll get a lot of information. And then at 8 o'clock or right around 8 o'clock, we'll stop for an open house segment. And all of our speakers will be sticking around to talk to you, to answer questions, whatever. They'll have displays. There's lots of information here tonight about fire mitigation, about everything else. So please stick around for all of that. And first of all, we are going to have Steve Harrelson, who is resident engineer with CDOT. He is gonna talk a little bit about the updates with CDOT right now. Steve?
Thank you. Not too much active construction going on in this area. Our next big project this summer is gonna be in South Park. We're gonna build five passing lanes, or four passing lanes, and a turn lane on 285. The passing lanes, one will be on the fair play side of Red Hill Pass. One will be on the South Park side of Kenosha Pass. And then we'll have two passing lanes just in the middle of South Park there to allow traffic, to give by those little moving trucks and so forth. And then we're gonna have a left turn lane at Elkhorn Road, which is near Como there. That's the road that serves Indian Mountain, if you're familiar with that area. That job is under at right now. It's gonna, the bid will be opened on this Thursday, I believe. And we go up to pick a contractor and have them on the ground working the first part of April. It's, we're hoping to get it done in one season. We're gonna add those passing lanes and also completely repave that. It's close to a 20-mile stretch of road. So it's a pretty significant amount of work. But no work on this side of the county line. We are designing Pine Junction right now. We are hoping to get it on the shelf, ready to advertise in a little over a year. We don't have any construction funds programmed for that yet. But there is hope or fear, I guess, depending on your perspective, that we can get that going, hopefully, in a little over a year and get that built. What it will be is an interchange similar to what was built at Schaefer's Crossing or Deer Creek, where we'll get rid of the signal and the left turn movement. So it'll be a bridge where 285 is gonna go over the county roads. And then we'll have little front roads to provide local access. Hopefully, if we can get that signal out of the way, it will help things. Operationally, this winter, and actually for well over a year, you all might be familiar with some problems we've had at Schaefer's Crossing, where people have been getting sucked into the, if they're heading southbound or westbound, they get sucked into the northbound side. We've done some striping and installed a temporary sign. We've got a permanent sign that's in the hopper at the sign shop. It's gonna be a large sign that delineates two through lanes and then the right turn exit for Elk Creek Road. So hopefully, that will solve some of our problems. We have been trying to get that fixed. But hopefully, we can get it done before anything horrible happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Don Smith. Don is the executive director of the Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce. Don?
Hello, Conifer. We have February, our beer tasting event coming up this Thursday. If you'd like to join me on Thursday at Blassey Garcia's. Ironically, this is a fundraiser for our high school scholarship fund. And speaking of which, is that time of year where we're accepting applications for scholarships? So if you have a senior, if you know of a senior from Conifer High School that's graduating this year, of course, pursuing business, please have them fill out the application for a scholarship fund. And that can be found on goconifer.com, which is our website. I wanted to let you know that we do have new owners for the Conifer Town Center, which is the Safeway Center. And there is a new resident there, and that's Paula from Aspen Per Cafe. I can definitely vouch for her mochas and her chai tea. So we wanna make sure we go and support her. It's a larger space. And then coming this summer, she'll actually be open a couple nights a week for dinner. So we wanna make sure we support her over there. I also wanted to invite you to our annual award celebration that's coming up on March 8. It's at Works Place. Hopefully, you're a morning person because it begins at 7:15 a.m. You'll be able to celebrate with me the leaders of our community. We wanna make sure we're recognizing those that are offering out services to our people in our area. And lastly, I wanted to let you know that I do have maps for you over here at the table. And we have a lovely lady named Sharon Trowke, who's actually taping tonight from the 285 Tourism Committee, which is a combo committee from the Platte Canyon and Conifer Two-Verse. And we're revising that map this year, so you'll actually have a new one. And they're absolutely gorgeous, but take one, this is definitely still good. And it shows you all the good things to do between C-470 and Jefferson City on 285. Thanks, I hope to see you Thursday.
Thank you, Don. And next, we have Susie Nelson. She's a Conifer Area Council Board member. She's gonna talk about the development updates that you have with your agenda. She's also gonna give a little update. If you were at the last meeting, we talked about the Conifer Parks Master Plan that is going. She's gonna talk a little bit about that, too. Susie?
Thank you, Shirley. This is on the handout that you got at the door. And I just wanted to let you know that planning, Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Resolution revisions were passed. The two, or the proposed revisions allow backyard chickens and bees and consolidate the agricultural, commercial corridor, industrial, mobile home, mountain residential, residential, and suburban residential districts. They have all these documents on the Jeffco website. There are two hearings. One is with the Planning Commission Wednesday, March 6 at 6:15. And then with the Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, March 26 at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. And that is a Tuesday. And also, there's a zoning resolution revision related to water supply and wastewater regulations. This affects not only developers, but residents as well. So there's a hearing for that that is with the Planning Commission on Wednesday, February 27, coming up the week, I guess, the week after next. And that's gonna be at 6:15. And then with the, that's the Planning Commission. And then the Commissioners on Tuesday, March 19 at 8:00 a.m. The only other thing is that there's a new residential development application for Deer Creek Meadows subdivision with, I think it's supposed to be Shawn Madden? No, it says Shom, or Sh- Shawn? Okay, misspelling. And the case number has not been determined yet. He wants to divide 6.2 acre acres of land into three individual lots for single-family detached residences. So that will be coming soon, when they get a case number and put that on the schedule. Okay, I'm on this master plan, Conifer Area Recreational Master Plan group. And we're just getting started with new developments to figure out how it will be managed. It does not have anything to do with parks and recreation districts or taxes in any way. There's no tax dollars involved. A new group called the Conifer Recreation Coalition, or CRC, is developing the plan. They'll be providing planned findings. And they are going to be looking for stakeholders from the community. This is everybody that is interested in this group. They're gonna identify what we need up here in Conifer for more recreational opportunities. They'll, they want input from the schools. They want input from parents and recreational groups, just residences, clubs, churches, anyone that's interested in being part of it. So we are still in the steering committee state. And we will be going forward with the stakeholder process. This is like a two-year plan that's come about. So right now, we're getting ready to write this proposal for a consultant, to find a consultant to help us put the whole thing together. So if you're interested, you can contact Shirley and give her your information. Or you can contact me. I'm Susie Nelson. I'll be around until the end tonight. So I hope that you're interested and we can get you involved.
Thank you, Susie. And next, we have Brian Mosley, who is the Conifer High School library supervisor. Brian? Public library.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to come out tonight, talk to you about some of the ones on at the library. And we have a few changes. At the beginning of the year, we changed our baby time and our story time. It used to be on Tuesdays. Now, we found that it might work a little better to have it Saturday mornings. So we have our baby time at 11:00 on Saturday mornings. And then our story time for a little bit younger kids at 11:30 on Saturdays. Let's see, we actually have a book group now. So that's something new for this year. If you're interested, I do have a sign up sheet on the back where if you want email reminders on that is. Next Tuesday, the 26th, we will be discussing Neil Gaiman's book, The Graveyard Book. That will be the last Tuesday of each month. Now, the second Tuesday of each month, I have team time going on, right after school at 3:00. If you have any teenagers in the community there. Generally, it's board games, activities like some basic painting or origami, things like that. But occasionally, we will watch movies. So we do have some upcoming movies. March 2 for All Ages. Come in with your family and friends, watch Wizard of Oz with us at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday. We'll make some popcorn, enjoy a Gravel movie. March 12 for that team time, will be Snow White and the Huntsman at 3:00 p.m. for all teenagers. Sign up sheets on back. I also have a sign up sheet for team time. If you have a teenager and you'd like to know what's going on each month, I can send that out as well. Oh, computer classes. I have had some requests for computer classes. And we're getting, we just started on some basic things. So I have a sheet back here. If you wanna stop by, I have three possibilities that we can start with. And kind of just leave a hash mark of which ones you, you know, if you wanted to take a class, what you'd like there. And then crafts, last thing I got here. We have some upcoming crafts. We'd like to use some coffee cans or oatmeal cans with the plastic lids that make great drawings and things like that. So if you have those lying around, please drop them by the library. We appreciate that much, and so would the kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. And next, I would like to welcome Brian Lucas. He is the new principal of Elk Creek Elementary. Brian?
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Ryan Lucas. I'm the principal of Elk Creek Elementary. I dressed up especially for you this evening. Usually, when you come to my school, I'm wearing a tie. But today, we were moving my favorite thing, and that's our state testing boxes to get ready for third grade reading tests that starts tomorrow. So if you'd like to see some high stress among principals, just call them about 9:00 tomorrow morning. Elk Creek, for those of you who don't know, is located halfway between Schaefer's Crossing and Pine Junction. It's right up there on the hill on the left-hand side as you're heading up the hill. Elk Creek is an amazing school. What my background is that I taught at Jeffco for six years. Before I becoming a principal, I ran Rocky Pond Academy of Evergreen on the other side of the hill. This is the right side of the hill, on the other side of the hill. For two years, then I opened a charter school in inner-city Denver before returning to Jeffco last year. And was highly selective in where I wanted to go. I knew I wanted to come back up to the mountains. I knew I wanted to not be the Evergreen side. And so I chose the house over here and looked specifically at Elk Creek Elementary. Elk Creek Elementary is one of the top, is in the top 1.5% of all schools in the state of Colorado. It's huge. I mean, that's a huge accomplishment. Last year, our reading and writing scores were third highest in the district. It's absolutely fantastic school, doing great, great things. Some projects we have coming up in the future. We're working on realigning our book room so that it meets the common core state standards. Those in elementary schools say that students need to be reading 50% fiction and 50% nonfiction, which if you're an educator, you already knew that. That nonfiction piece is really, really important. The other thing that we're working on, and we've just started, is taking a look at how our soccer field, I don't know if you've seen that brown soccer field outside of our school. But we know that there's a need in our neck of the woods way over there for our parents so they don't have to drive so far. So we're looking at what it would cost to put some field turf in there. And we're just in the beginning stages of pulling that together. Jeffco came in, the school district came in and said, oh, $500,000 to $600,000. And I said, we could do that for better. So we're working on finding different ways to pull that together. What else about Elk Creek? Elk Creek has only had four principals. And the last principal, Joanne Marion, was there for nine years. So my job is to outdo her. So you'll be seeing me around for quite some time. My office is right next to the clinic, so if my voice is cracking, it's not puberty, I promise. It's a second grade cough that I picked up right next door. I'll be here all night. I think that's about all for me. I'll be around afterward if you have any questions. I love talking about schools. I love talking about what we're doing. And, oh, one last thing. You can't pick a bad school on the Conifer side. You just can't. Every school up here is doing great things. I know all of the principals, we just, they just hired a principal down from Marshdale. I know all of the principals, Wendy Woodland, Becky Brown here, they're doing fantastic jobs. You can't pick a bad school up here in Conifer. So we're very fortunate to have amazing public schools up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We know we have great schools. We have a great community. It's just amazing what this, what this community does and what we have and what we're thankful for. As you all know, it's been almost a year since the Lower North Fork Fire. What a horrific event. And we're experiencing another dry year. We're in the middle of a drought. I mean, it's pretty scary. So tonight, we're gonna be talking about what legislative and other changes have been made and what must we all do to be prepared for the wildfire season. You know, I had a, I had a dream a few weeks ago. It was actually a nightmare. I dreamed that there was a wildfire racing towards my house. And I woke up in a sweat, thinking, oh, my gosh, I still haven't done that video of my house. And I don't have my stuff ready to take with me. No belongings ready, you know, ready to go. And I thought, this is ridiculous. I lived up here 35 years. I was even president of Inter Canyon Fire District. I was evacuated last year, and I still don't. So I hope you guys have done better than me. And I'm hoping that there's some speakers here tonight that might get my wear and gear and maybe some others, too, so that we can be ready if anything happens this year. And first of all, just a very, very short presentation. Our local fire districts are obviously so, so important to us. And I just really want to introduce them, and they're going to talk for just a minute or two. We're going to give them a lot more time, probably, at the April meeting. So you'll be hearing a lot more from them then. But Bill McLaughlin is the fire chief for Elk Creek. And Todd Morris here with Inter Canyon. And they will be sticking around, and they'll have a lot of information for you here in the open house.
Just a couple of quick things, make this really short. We, it looks like there will be three slash dates again this year for collection of slash. Those dates are right now just in pencil. We're still working those out. But it does look like the first one will be at Conifer High School on Father's Day weekend, as it always seems to be, which is the 15th and 16th. The Inter Canyon date is still being negotiated at this point. So we're not sure when that's gonna be. Let's see. We've got a number of things, you know, a number of materials over there that we encourage people to come over and take a look at, particularly the evacuation guides and kind of the preparation for the season. And, you know, I believe, I'm sure, I think, we'll be talking a little bit about the changes to the emergency notification system. But that's also kind of included in that material. And then lastly, one other big issue that we've seen as an outcome of the fires, not just here locally, but throughout Colorado, has been a lot more scrutiny from the insurance companies, the underwriters. And we've been hearing a lot about that. All of the fire chiefs in the mountains have basically started to meet to work on plans for how we can keep those fire insurance rates from going up any further and how to, you know, make sure that people continue to have coverage. We're anticipating that we can make some changes to the way the fire service is dispatched throughout the mountain communities. That will help that issue. But we do have to recognize that that is something, because of the fires, that we're gonna be seeing a lot of scrutiny on. So that's unfortunately, one of those effects of the fire that we have to deal with.
I'm Todd Moore, the wildland captain of Inter Canyon. Thanks for being here. Like the chief said, we've got a lot of material over here fire-wise. A little similar to the stuff in the back. We're here to answer questions for you folks if you're in the Canyon District. We have a program, Go Come Out With Your House. I just need to contact our administrators. She'll get ahold of myself or one of the other guys on the wildland crew when we come out and visit. We also have, Inter Canyon has a website. It's intercanyonfire.org. And they also have Twitter and Facebook. So they have guys maintaining that. And we'll post the slash collection. I think we had trouble managing the date we had. So I think that's the reason we're not sure exactly which date it's gonna be. But probably sometime in August. We, not sure, we may have an earlier one also. So check the website as well, check the emergency management website. I think the Jefferson County will probably have that, too. Again, thank you. Stop back when we're done and answer any questions. We'll find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill and Todd. If you could have the county commissioners come on up. Did I mention how amazing our fire departments are and all the volunteers that work in those private offices? And like I said, they will be here again, you know, in April to talk more. And we'll have a lot more information at that meeting as far as all the slash sites and everything. So it's good to know. Okay, well, we've got all three of our county commissioners here tonight. We have Don Roser. I would like to welcome Casey Ty, our new county commissioner. Who's starting?
Me.
Don, here you go.
You are all being punished. You have all three of us accedee. So we're gonna tag team it. I get first shot here. Real quick, you've seen me quite a bit. Don Roser, county commissioner, I reside with District 3, which is where we're at right now, in District 3. And I was elected in 2010. And I think it was Brian was up here talking. She's holding up the sign time. Oh, you are mean. You are mean. Talking about story time at the library. Well, they slid in a picture of me at story time at the library. That's one of my great joys of being able to be a county commissioner. And at the Lakewood Library, I tend to volunteer twice, if not more, a month at story time down there. Phenomenal, phenomenal programs the library has. Just as I go through my notes here, you'll see for Colorado counties, I serve in the legislative process at Colorado counties. We go through, we look at all the legislation that is coming out. And I see Representative DeRose here tonight. And we'll be talking about some legislation that's come out of the Lower North Fork Fire Committee and other items on here as we go through. If you look at our budget challenges, I always get the budget slides. We have been challenged as of late, for the past, actually, two, three years on our budget. Our revenues continue to go down. And you say revenues for the county primarily, and we'll see later on in the slides, our revenues made up of property taxes that come into the county. We also have intergovernmental, which we look at state and federal government dollars that come back to the county for different programs. We also have three funds that have the biggest hit this year with major fund balance limitations, and that's road and bridge. We also have library and social services. And Commissioner Griffin will speak to social services later on in the presentation about how many additional people over the last couple of years have come in for some sort of assistance, whether that be housing assistance, food assistance, some sort of assistance to help them through these difficult times. Capital needs as far as road and bridge construction and maintenance. Our road and bridge, transportation and engineering, they took over a million-dollar hit this year in their budget. And we're looking at trying to defer maintenance as much as we possibly can while keeping up our ability to plow the snow, to fix those bridges that need to be fixed and to fill those potholes that need to be filled. But overall, road maintenance and overlays are being pushed out until such time as we have the funds to do that work. Network capacity for our IT department, we're running out of space. Just like your home computer sometimes, you run out of space because of all those wonderful things that we put on our computer, we're running out there. And at the same time, our voting system, we have to spend this year for 2014 about $4 million to upgrade our voting system. In fact, we're not upgrading. We have to replace it because of state regulations in our voting process. So that's $4 million, even though 82% of Jefferson County residents vote via mail. We have to update and spend that $4 million to update that voting equipment. With that property tax revenue, where do the revenues come from in the county? The majority of that, 47.6% come from property tax. The other, from a small bit, from sales tax, that's an open space tax, and also for local improvement districts. And then the intergovernmental portion that you see there in black. Where does your budget pay for? Primarily, if you look at the different departments here, you'll see from Board of County Commissioners, the sheriffs, development and transportation. Most of the dollars that you see that come into the county go towards overall salaries and benefits to providing services for all the residents of Jefferson County. As we approach our fire season, I wanna make sure that you are all aware that I am representing you all, whether it be at Colorado County's ink, when we deal with legislation. And I think, like I did today, I was down at the Capitol, talking to the governor and talking to some of our other electeds about what is going on, looking at fire prevention, wildfire management. If you look at Senate Bill 1382 and 83, Representative DeRose here, and I'm sure she'll talk about those a little bit more, but those are still in the process. And going through, if you'd like, I have copies. I brought plenty of copies for everyone. If you wanna know what that proposed legislative legislation looks like, you're more than welcome to come up here and grab a copy. As the chief mentioned, we're looking dry, dry, dry. As of last week, that is our map for Colorado. And you can see we're extreme to extreme dry in Colorado. And that stretches all the way out Nebraska, Kansas, and all the way up into Wyoming. And also, real quick, talking about the Code Red and going there. I'm giving my time to cut off here, so I'm hurrying up. And if you look here, if you have any questions, I'll be around. And with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Griffin. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you. I knew he couldn't follow the rule of the time. Anyway, thank you for inviting us here. We always enjoy coming up here, and thank you. It's not snowing tonight, and it's, I really like to have more streetlights so that I can see better. But again, it's so good to see all of you, and this picture was taken when I first was elected. I've been elected two times, and so, as county commissioner anyway, and this one was taken with a telephone camera by, not the pilot, but we kept trying to figure out what we could use that for, so we said, well, county commissioner oversees the county. So anyway, that's it. Our human service department, as Commissioner Roser was saying, we continually have to deal with this situation because it's really, really hard. When the economy is bad, then naturally, all these people need to have more and more services. So we have had a lot of jobs, and we have a new one that says, just add one, meaning all the businesses, if you're able to add one person, that's going to help our workforce center drastically. The other thing is, is our open space is turning 40 years old this year, and so they're going to have a big party. The party for the park is going to be not in Jefferson County Park, but at Red Rocks. So anyway, watch for that, and if you have any questions about that, go to the website, get that information, and again, thank you, and Casey.
Well, hi, my name's Casey Ty, and I am the new commissioner. Wow, good-looking guy. And they asked me to introduce myself briefly, real quick. I'm a long-time Jefferson County resident, went to Creighton High School. I worked for CDOT for over 20 years, and a great experience at CDOT. I can tell you after coming over to Furley County, and I've been working now for about six weeks, this is a very professionally-run organization. You can feel good about your Jefferson County government. The staff is very professional. My other two commissioners, I'm pretty impressed. They always are prepared, they're always challenging me. We don't always get along on the issues. We may disagree, but I'll tell you one thing, I'll tell you one thing, it's been a pleasure to get to know and get to work with them. So I'm really glad to be a part of the team, looking forward to working with them for the next several years. Now, you say six weeks, I got most of it figured out. The fun job I get tonight is I get to ask for volunteers. Actually, one thing that makes Jefferson County so great is the time the citizens give back to the county. And this is an opportunity we have now. Every spring, we ask people to sign up and join our various boards and commissions. We have over 300 different citizens serve on different boards and commissions. We have the Planning Commission, we have various other ones, and we really need our citizens to get involved. So if you have any interest at all, please check out the website, jeffco.us is the website there, and you can apply to be on a board and commission. And there's lots of different ones that are available there, and I'll highlight one or two of them. The Audit Committee, I'm an old auditor from CDOT, so auditors are always warm to my heart. And so if you want to have any interest in finding out what goes on in county government, Audit Committee's the place to be. But there's a lot of good committees there, you can see. Whatever your skill is, your talent is, we need you in Jefferson County government, please think about signing up. So again, we have lots of different ways to connect too. We want to get out the word to people about what's going on. We have Open Jeffco. You can watch our board meetings or the Planning Commission meetings on the video online. You can also check out email newsletters. You can also find us on Twitter and Facebook. We have a public calendar. We want the citizens to know what's going on in Jefferson County. We want to get your feedback, and we think overall that's what makes Jefferson County such a great place to live. So that's the end of our presentation. Again, thank you for inviting us up to Colorado.
I just wanted to say that we brought some information about what was accomplished last year, so they're up there on the table, so be sure and grab one.
Thank you. Be sure and talk to them after the meeting. Next, we have Sheriff Tech Mink, and I think we have some very exciting new information, and he is going to share that right now. And I think you all might be next, so just be aware.
Thanks for having me, and I think what I want to speak about has been alluded to by Chief McGlaughlin and Commissioner Roser. And that's, you've probably read about and heard about, the new, we call it Reverse Line 1-1 system, which sends out emergency notices for this purpose in the case of wildfires. The E911 Authority in November of last year went with a new contractor for those services. Now, the E911 Authority is a separate board, and you see that surcharge on your telephone bill that goes toward the E911 Authority. They contract with a service provider that helps us do those emergency notifications throughout the county. So all the cities and the unincorporated counties use the same system. And the contract went into effect in November. We did some testing, and hopefully some of you got the test phone calls that we had. We pushed it out to about 340,000 different homes in the entire Jefferson County area, and our response was just about, with it all said and done, about 74%, which is, according to the industry standards, is very good. Now, that leaves 100,000 that we didn't get contact with, and there were a number of different reasons why. Sometimes if you don't, if nobody answers the phone and it keeps ringing, that counts as a miss. Or you go to, it'll ring, and you pick up an answering machine, that counts as a hit if somebody answers. So the point I want to make is, we are going to continue to test the mapping part of that system, which kind of locates everybody, especially in the unincorporated areas, so that we can be relatively safe in assuming that the mapping product they have with Code Red, which is the vendor, is pretty well accurate. So we will probably, in this area in particular, do some testing on that before the real fire season hits in the next couple of months, so be prepared for that. I also want you to know that with the new system, you've got to opt in again if you want your cell phone to receive those messages. So you have to go to our website, jeffcosheriff.com, and it'll walk you through how you can opt in so that you can get those emergency messages on your cell phone. You'll go to your landline. It'll need you to opt in on the cell phones. I know you know, hopefully Chief McGlaughlin alluded to it, there's material over here that gives the different levels of notification you will receive in a situation. Level one is kind of warn you to get your things together. Level two is be ready to leave, because when you get to level three, that means get out immediately. It's, don't wait, just get out. You should be prepared if you follow levels one and two. So we want to make sure that everybody is prepared, like Shirley said, and there's information there of what you need to get prepared, to get ready, and unfortunately, it is going to be a bad fire season, and we will do everything in our power to make sure everybody is safe and well-prepared and has the information necessary. One thing I forgot to mention is, you know those annoying things you get across your TV screen from the Weather Service? Those beep, 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 this is a test of the emergency notification network? We have entered into an agreement with them too, is another method to get the information out. So they will only do it when we get to level three. So if we push out of level three on the Reverse Line 1-1, that will come across TV and radio, but again, that's leave immediately. Danger is imminent. So Angela?
You've got plenty of time.
Do you?
You do.
Would you like to come up here and dance with me?
Sure.
So we'll be around, we've got a lot of deputies back here if you want to ask questions a little bit later on. I know that the fire department has stuff on mitigation. I can't tell you how important that is for not only them, but for us too, to make sure that your property is mitigated, and that's all I have.
I never knew him to be that short-winded. Thank you, Tim. And next, we have Dana Reynolds, Director of the Office of Preparedness with the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And he's going to be talking a little bit more about that preparedness piece, and he'll also be talking about some of the changes that have been made.
Great, thank you so much, Shirley. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you so much for the invitation. I really do appreciate it. As Shirley said, I'm with the Colorado Department of Public Safety, specifically with the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and we partner very close with our sister division, Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and actually Paul Cook is here tonight, who's the director of there. So if you have any technical questions on wildfire, direct them to him. But anyways, my presentation tonight is part preparedness, part information, part awareness, part education, really. Fifteen minutes to kind of talk about a very complex subject like wildfire really doesn't do it justice, but I'll be available after the presentation, just like all the others. I have a table set up in the back, all sorts of really good preparedness materials that we brought from the state, so we encourage you to come by and chat with us on some of that stuff. Couple of things I want to talk about, I just want to preface the presentation tonight that I am providing the state perspective with my presentation. I came up through the ranks of the State Patrol and spent 12 years there gaining to the rank of captain. Last time, I'm in charge of Homeland Security Section in the Kayak Defusion Center. Migrated over to the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, which I love. It's just a civilian position, but allows me to get into all that stuff that I'm passionate about. So that's going to be kind of my perspective talking here tonight. Also, I wanted to just throw a little blurb out about home rule. You know, Colorado is a home rule state. You've probably heard that term many times. What that means essentially is that local jurisdictions have ultimate authority when disasters occur for response and those types of core things. What the state does is the state exists to provide resources to local jurisdictions when catastrophe exceeds those resources of that local jurisdiction. So if they've exhausted everything locally, if they've exhausted their mutual aid with surrounding fire departments or law enforcement agencies, and they need those resources of the state, or the National Guard, or whatever the case is, that's when it raises up to our level. We're going to talk a little bit about WUI, Wildfire Urban Interface. You've heard that many times, some of the general threats of wildfire, and then we'll talk about a little bit about notifications, kind of piggybacking on what the sheriff talked about, and some of the challenges of evacuation. First, just a brief discussion of the WUI, housing and commercial development that exists in areas that are prone to wildfires, areas just like Conifer. You have pockets of dense development, commercial, residential, a mix of the both, and we often refer to that as the red zone. It's in the red zone because it really concerns first responders, Homeland Security, Emergency Management, whatever the case is, because that threat exists, and there's so much at stake. You know, I used to patrol in Jefferson County and Gilpin County, so I know that many of these areas up there, there's one way in, one way out. So, you know, areas like that, you know, raise complications for evacuations and whatnot, so it's really, really critical that we have that situational awareness of where those risks are, who's endangered, and what we can do to help prevent that. I wanted to throw a little blurb up here though, that, you know, as the state, we're not just focused on wildfires, we're focused on a whole slew of hazards and threats. You know, so they encompass everything from blizzards, which we've had none, but everything from foreign animal diseases to pandemics to epidemics, to tornadoes, to flash floods, on to human threats, like active shooters, to cybersecurity threats and all those types of things. But wildfire is and continues to be one of the highest priorities of the state, given the threat. But wildfire is not the only fire threat out there. I put up here a fire that occurred last year in Washington County out on the eastern plains. This was a grass fire. Forty-five thousand acres in one day. Now that, to me, is astonishing. You're not going to see that in a wildfire. I don't care how strong the winds are. Forty-five thousand acres in one day in Washington County, and the only thing that really, you know, helped us out out there is the fact that it's sparsely populated. It's nowhere nearly as densely populated as the Front Range, the foothills, and those types of areas. But just to put on your radar, that these are the types of things that keep us up at night. It's all the threats and hazards, we have to look at the whole picture. Our vulnerability to wildfire, you know, spans multiple issues here. We have the drought issue, beetle kill in the forest, which has taken an expensive toll across Colorado. Lightning, we have the arson problem. In fact, most of our wildfires either fall to one or two camps. It's either a lightning cause, or it's a human cause. If it's a human cause, it's not always arson. Sometimes it's accidental. But, so those are really problematic. Rate flag warnings, wind is a constant problem here, and we really struggled with that last year. But getting it to, looking back to last year, June of 2012, this is just a chart from NOAA, which shows all the states across the United States, and you can see that Colorado's highlighted there in the red. It had the highest record temperatures for the whole month of the entire country last year, in June of 2012, which I think is astonishing. If we have a repeat of that this year, there's going to be serious room for concern. The US Drought Monitor, I plucked this right off the internet in preparing for the presentation. You don't need to focus too much here on the chart there, but just know that Colorado sits there, and you can see that we are still in the grip of a severe drought within Colorado. Now granted, most of it was really affecting the agriculture on the eastern plains, but it really makes no difference, because from our next slide, this is snowpack, current as of February 15th of 2013. And as you can see right here, this is an average of snowpack year-to-date for 2013, and this is where we were last year, 2012. What does all this mean? You put it better than I could, but yeah, there's reason for alarm. I mean, granted, March and April are snowiest months, and we're still crossing our fingers hoping that we're going to get some decent snowfall, but if we don't, then things have the potential for being even worse than they did last year. Now, we have the benefit of hindsight, right? We have the Lower North Fork, we have Waldo Canyon, we have High Park. In June of last year, we had 14 wildfires burning simultaneously across the state. Our state resources, the local resources were stretched paper-thin, trying to manage all simultaneous fires, and we're poised to do that again this year if we don't start getting some much-needed moisture. But the caveat is, is that I think we're going to be much better prepared this year. We have much better situational awareness of the threat. We have legislative action. We have first responder agencies like the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department revamping their E911 systems, trying to improve reverse notification. We're trying to improve our evacuation protocols. We've done a lot since last year to try to enhance our ability to respond in the event that the wildfire season, you know, looks a lot like last year. So what does Conifer need to do? Conifer needs to be prepared, first and foremost. We've talked a lot about these different provisions here for preparedness, creating defensible space around your home, hardening your home if you're in the middle of a remodel, or you're building a home using fire-resistant materials, removing excess fuels like that stack of firewood that's up against the side of your house. You know, it's all these common sense things. Most of these things are really common sense. Adhering to open burning restrictions and fire bans, and reporting those that don't abide by those to the Sheriff's Department. And most importantly, and I'd like to highlight here, is getting to know your neighbors. Did you know in very large-scale catastrophes and disasters, that in a lot of instances, it takes about 72 hours for first responders to get to your particular area, which means two of you are relying on? You're relying on your friends, you're relying on your friends, your family, your neighbors. Those are the people who you're going to have to rely on in some instances, depending on the magnitude, the threat, or the catastrophe that we're dealing with. So now's the time to start knocking on doors, getting to know people that live around you, that are in your community. I mean, we say it all the time at the state level in homeland security, I mean, the time for us to be exchanging business cards... I mean, the time for us to be exchanging business cards is not after a disaster is happening. You know, we need to have built up those relationships with first responder agencies like Jeffco Sheriff, or the Local Emergency Management Office. We need to have those relationships in place before the red flag goes up and before the disaster strikes. Another one here is your property accessible by firefighting apparatus. That was a big problem in some of the fires. So lots of these different bullet points. But most importantly, having a plan. Now's the time to plan, and I have a bunch of resource materials in the back that you can take with you tonight when you leave about how you can do that. You need a communication plan. You know, what to do when the cellphone tower doesn't work because it got burned over in the fire. You know, how are you going to communicate with one another? Where are you going to rendezvous? Where's your meeting place? If you've got some people at school, some people downtown at work, some people at King Supers when the evacuation notice comes out, and nobody knows where anyone else is. So a bunch of different areas here, and I'm kind of running out of time. She's got the one-minute sign-up for me. I threw a bunch of education pieces in here just to try to talk through those, and some of them I'll just get on. That's why windy numbers are really the biggest hazard here with fires. That's how these fires spread so rapidly. And that was especially apparent in Fort Lower North Fork and Waldo. Crowding occurs when the fire jumps from tree to tree. A home can burn from the inside out during a wildfire. You ever heard of that? The ambient temperatures of a wildfire can exceed 1,500 degrees. That's before the fire even reaches your house. So your couch, you know, your window shades, your rug combust inside the house before the fire even gets there. How fast do wildfires move? Extremely fast. Just go back to Storm King Mountain when 14 wildland firefighters died back in 1994. They got overrun by a fire. And then also the Fertline Fire, which is, I think it's still smoldering up there in Rocky Mountain National Park, flared up a few months ago, went three miles in 35 minutes. So extremely, extremely fast. So I threw a bunch of these in there. We talked a little bit about evacuations. Evacuations are all going to be dependent on the timing, how much lead time you have, and how many people have to evacuate. Waldo Canyon is and represents the largest single-area evacuation in Colorado history for a wildfire. Thirty-two thousand evacuees on or about June 26th of last year. It was just a staggering evacuation effort. So, and then I took this one up here because it hits home, close to home, with all you, which wildfire resulted in the greatest loss of civilian life? That's obviously the Lower North Fork Fire with three civilian fatalities. So lots of concern with wildfire, and rightly so. You need to be concerned about what those evacuation notices are, how you're going to be dialed into your local jurisdiction so when those notifications go out. As I said, there's lots of factors affecting evacuation. Egress from neighborhoods, lead time, number of people, and so on and so forth. So you've got to take those into consideration. And how will you be notified? You know, as the sheriff illustrated so pointedly here, that Reverse 911 is not perfect. And in the Homeland Security world where I work, we always talk about redundancies and everything that we do in systems. It's important that you are dialed into as many networks as you can to get alert notifications that there's an impending evacuation, whether it's NOAA, whether it's a smartphone app, you know, whether it's Reverse 911, whatever. Having those redundancies in place so you get those notifications is key. So here's a few other sources. I plucked right off Jefferson County Sheriff. Sheriff, hope you don't mind if I was overstepping. But great resources there to sign up. And that's really a neat little thing here, Smart 911, where you can create your own profile on there, put things like your building plans, specific things about your house, how many people in your family, and those types of things. That's a really nice add-on there from the county. Limitations on 911, the sheriff already touched on a lot of those, so I'm not going to go on there and accept to highlight the fact that no system is failure-proof. That's why you have to be dialed into your communities. A lot of times, it might come down to sight and sound. You walk out, if you can see flames, and it's windy, you need to get out. You know, it's that simple. So common sense oftentimes prevails. And you obviously know that the consequences of not evacuating. Eighteen hundred dead in Hurricane Katrina, and a lot of those were people who failed to evacuate. And we just had it again with Hurricane Sandy. I think about 30 killed out there, and a bunch of those were people who didn't evacuate from those low-flooded areas. And I was following that, and they sent out those notices up and down and all around to try to get people out of those low-lying areas in the burrows. So some helpful links here for you, Ready, Set, Go, and Fire Wise. Those are the two big programs that we promote at the state level. And they're also the same that many of the local fire departments volunteer or otherwise also promote. So I think we're all on the same page with that. But I mean, I can take questions and comments and concerns at the back. Sorry, I don't know where we finished. Throw me off this answer.
We're going to keep that slide up for a little bit because you want to copy some of those websites. I'm going to be down. Next, we have Representative Sherri Giraud. Amazing. She is so, so dedicated to our community and everyone she represents. So Sherri? I think if you applaud, you can't hold your tongue.
I know. I know, and your tie was cut short because of him.
We're worried about, I think we're at day 48, maybe? Maybe only day 40, I don't know. The legislative session started the middle of Ju-, January, January, that's what it was. And you all know that I'm still on the Joint Budget Committee. We started in November. There are four bills coming out of the Lower North Fork Fire Commission. I'm supporting three of the four bills. None of them would have helped the victims of the Lower North Fork Fire. None of them would have prevented the Lower North Fork Fire. Those of you that were watching and listening and reading understand that basically what the commission did was, in my mind, everything but what it was supposed to do. But anyways, so those bills are going forward. There was, the governor also passed, I believe, two executive orders. Scott Appel was down there the day that they did it, and Paul Cook, who's with the state, who's... Paul, wave your, yeah, there you go. Paul is working with the Department of Public Safety in the Fire Safety Division. If you have any questions, he is actually sitting on one of the commissions of the governor's appointment, so he'll be able to give you information on that. There will also be bills that are coming forward. Oh, and by the way, the point of the commission is they wanted a broad, a broad section of people that are involved with fire, that would be insurance people, planning people, local government people, so that they could study the fire issue. I think we'll probably be having quite a few of those until, I don't know, until they feel we haven't had enough. So that'll be starting very soon. I believe Claire Lady is also going to be running a bill regarding insurance. Also a bill raising, no, I think, Bill Cadman, and I can't recall who's running it in the House. Maybe it's Claire. I'm running a bill to raise the caps on liability, the state's liability. It won't be removing the caps like we are attempting to do on the Lower North Fork fire victims, but it's just to raise the caps. And I haven't really looked at the bill. I haven't looked at the bill. My concern is all of these issues that we're going through, they will have an impact on all of our insurance rates, if they haven't already had one on your homes. So we've got that issue. We went through the gun bills in the last four days. I talked to Ted Sheriff Make about them, and I said, which is probably a bad time for a legislator to ask his sheriff what he thinks about the bills. But I asked him as I came in, because I already voted on them. And I said, "What do you think?", and he said, "They're, they won't do any good", and I agree. One of them will probably take one of the companies in Colorado up in Erie. They'll probably move to Wyoming. And the other three are basically not enforceable. Now, I don't say this lightly, because we were all affected by what's happened in the past and what we have going on in Colorado and across the country is very sad. I am supporting, the governor's talking about putting 18.5 million more into mental health. And to me, that's where the real answer is. So hopefully, those will be going forward. And just so you know, we're looking at about, we were looking at about between 600 and 718 million more in our budget this year, actually, because of a change at the federal level with some of the budget negotiations, that amount has gone down. Well, 45 million for this year, 100 million for next year. By next year, I'm talking about the '13, '14 year. And remember, our budget cycle started July 1st. The governor is also proposing, instead of having a 4% reserve, is proposing a 5% reserve, which would mean that there would be extra dollars. He's planning on those dollars being used for firefighting. That's going to represent about a $73 million more. And I believe, Paul, if I'm wrong, was it between 43 and 48 million dollars we spent on the fires?
Forty-eight million.
Forty-eight million, thank you. So we spent 48 million. That was combined on all the fires in this last year. So I appreciate the fact that the governor's doing that. He's also talking about paying back all of the funds that we drained in order to pay for the fires that we had here. Legislatively, just so you know, today, we, the debate on second reading in the House had to do with a bill having to do with sex education in K through 12. And so, and that will be voted on perhaps tomorrow, maybe not until later. They, the Speaker of the House, Representative Ferrandino, has been dropping bills very quickly, so I don't know what's coming. And they said there'll be a lot of late bills. So we don't really know what's coming, when, and we really don't know what all the bills will be. There is a bill that's being discussed as far as repealing the death penalty. I talked to you about the gun bills we'll be going through. The undocumented student bill's going to be going through. The civil unions bill's going to be going through. There'll be a lot of different bills like that that will be going through. The initiatives are supposed to be jobs in the economy, and I believe those, some of those may be coming through. I am running a bill with the governor's office that does do a lot for, it's basically economic development dollars for advanced industry like bioscience, clean tech. All the, it's good for all the research universities. It's been a busy year, but it's a very different year. And, you know, there are 28 Republicans, and, see, I should probably be able to do the math, out of 65, the rest are Democrats. So that means that the minority of the Republicans is large enough that the Democrats, they have full run. And so, and that's, you know, that's where we're at, the key angle. And that's basically where I'm at. I will be around this evening if you have any other questions. It's always wonderful that you all come out in the force you do. I appreciate the fact that Shirley tried to change locations and times to slip us all up.
Thank you.
But we still found her, and thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sherri. As we mentioned before, all of the speakers are sticking around to talk to you about whatever you'd like to talk to them about. We have lots of other people that asked to have flyers and brochures and information here. Jennifer with Creek's Sign Insurance is actually here. She has an evacuation list. That's going to help with mind reading, and I hope that all of you will take that evacuation list and be ready so you don't have that same nightmare. And I just wanted to, we've got a lot of things going on. We've got a spring flame recycling event coming up. We've got the Mount Mary Home Show. You know, there's just all kinds of things. The fire chiefs are here to talk. They've got all kinds of stuff. Dana's in the back over here with all of this information. So please stick around. Get as much information, talk as much as you would like. We do have to be out of here a little before nine. But I want to thank you so much for coming. And our next town hall meeting is April 17. And they assured me it will be a Wednesday night, and it will be the night that we had actually decided to have it. So thank you so much for coming.